It is six thirty if you would stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Dryer, if you would call the roll.
Mayor Connie?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Ullman?
Here.
Ms. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Here.
If there are no further amendments to tonight's additions or amendments to tonight's agenda, the agenda will stand as presented. Is there a motion to approve the council work session meeting minutes from November first, two thousand twenty-three?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Terry?
Upstairs.
Mr. Ullman?
Yeah.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Stent?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Aye.
We have a proclamation this evening, but unfortunately I do not see Mr. Stinner here in the audience at the moment, so I'm gonna hold on to this and wait and hope that he may show up. But I will go ahead and give a little bit of behind the scenes of the proclamation this evening. Lieutenant General Charles E. Stinner, Jr., he has been very wonderful for our community of working through the Veterans Day ceremony. He was the chairperson for the VFW and American Legion in two thousand twenty. And as we all know, that year was a little bit crazy. And so he was the one to say, you know, okay, when I presented, like, if we could have the ceremony outdoors and should we go ahead and have it? And he said, yes, let's do it. So I wanted to honor him this evening for all of his work. He's very active in the Plain City Lions Club, hospice, and all sorts of different organizations. I feel like Mr. Stinner has his hand in a lot of different things that makes Plain City what it is. So this proclamation for him this evening is for him this evening, so hopefully he will walk through the doors here and we'll be able to present it, but.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I know Lieutenant General Stinner by virtue of being on the Pleasant Valley Colony Low-Income Housing Board. He was chairman, president of that board for the first couple of years I was on it. And it turns out, his family has a long history here in Plain City. He is a generational resident. He lives in Marysville now, but he's a generational. His father was a Presbyterian pastor, I believe, at the Presbyterian Church. And his father actually created that Pleasant Valley Colony Low-Income Housing Unit. He was instrumental in doing that. And that's why I wanted to say something about it, just because of that family history of contributions to Plain City. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed, for that addition. So hopefully we'll be able to present that this evening. If not, we will definitely get it, and I will read it here before the meeting is over. But moving on, we have one visitor signed up, and it's Amanda Nixon.
This is my first time here.
That's okay. We do have a three-minute timeline, I just wanted to preface that.
I mean, I want your guys' opinion on, you know, this, because I don't know how to go about it. I know some people are telling me that I can't, and there's nothing that you can do. And then some people are like, well, if you take it up higher, whatever, you know, you can't more, whatever. But anyways, my thing is, is about North Avenue Apartments. I live at two twelve East First Avenue. I used to live in the apartments, and, you know, I've moved up, I fixed my life, got a lot of things in control. Well, two of the residents at the apartments are causing, they, you know, havoc with everybody. You know, they just wanna come outside and they start yelling and cussing at people. They do threaten a couple of times, but there's nothing I can do. The police department tell me that I have to get him on record, I can't do anything. Like, when I try to get him on record, you know, there's either too much noise, too, you know, too many people yelling, or, you know, whatever, and I can't get his voice. Or my cameras outside in my house, they say that they can't, they can't make out what he's saying. So, I mean, it's just, it's getting to the point where I'm done. And I wanna know about, if you guys have an ordinance for strobe lights and as porch lights? Because my youngest son, he has cerebral palsy, and he has seizures. So I meet him once a week. So we usually go on walks, you know, on Saturday evenings, you know, since it's getting darker sooner. It's a little bit later, we gotta go out and walk in the dark. So I took him outside, he shone away and, like, started shaking, and I didn't know if he was gonna go into seizure. So I asked Barb and Pete, and I asked them, I said, kid, is there any way that you can take them down? At least while he's here, it is what it is. If you guys wanna, you know, make fools of yourselves, fine, that is what, you know, it is what it is. But just take them down on Saturdays when my son is around, because he can't be around. And they got mad, just went off the rail and started cussing and called the cops and everything else, and saying that, you know, we're harassing them, but it's like, okay, I think they're harassing us because they have been for the last two years. You know, we called the police, and we said, unfortunately, there's nothing they can do unless we catch them in the act, or they catch them in the act of doing anything. And we can't never catch them. And I'm just, it's getting to the point where I'm fed up, because he made a comment today that he doesn't care if my retarded son has a seizure in the ice, so I'm done, I'm like, I'm just done. Sorry. If you poke the bear too much, it just gets out of control. And I'm just, I'm trying to take it the legal way. And I don't know what to do, because everybody that tells me, you know, well, you can take it to the village meeting, you can do this, and, you know, you can take it up higher, or do what you need to do, or whatever. And then everybody's always telling me, oh, but there's nothing to do. You know, there's nothing we can do, we've been trying to get rid of the apartments for years. I get that, but there's gotta be something that can be done, at least about the residents that, you know, that are living there harassing every of the residents. I started a petition. I have seven signatures so far. I've not done it, I just started it today. I have seven signatures from neighbors around that place, saying that, you know, around it and even at that place. They're saying either they need to get rid of this place, or they need to get rid of the problem. And the problem is them, because they're always constantly harassing all the neighbors. You can't even go outside to turn bushes, or come outside and cuss me out, or do whatever. I'm just done. I can't do it anymore. So, I'm just, at that point, you know, it's either, you know, I get some answers here. If I don't get the answers here, I'm going up higher. I'm gonna figure out a way to do what I need to do, because I'm sick and tired of all the crap that I get, all the crap that everybody gets on that block. It's just, it's getting, it's getting ridiculous. I mean, I can't do it anymore.
Thank you. I know it probably takes a lot to come here, frustrating to have to deal with that. And I know I can talk with our, with zoning and see what the, like, with strobe lights and everything, because that could possibly be a nuisance.
I was told by the, you know, the Plain City cops, there's nothing they can do about it, which is because of the fact that it's, you know, it's not in the city ordinance. They said it's not in the city ordinance, so they can't do anything about it. But, you know, it's blinding people as they drive down the road. We had a couple of, they walked the road into our yard. They were fine, but they just left. But then we had a conversation about those lights. They're blinding people when they drive, and, you know, there are a couple of people that live around there that have seizures. You know, and they can't even go outside at nighttime, they even sit outside because of those lights. They're flushing out of people's houses and out the road. And it's just, it's not safe. It's not.
We, we'll, we'll talk and look it over, and also I know we can reconvene on our nuisance ordinance, because I know that we are working on trying to strengthen it to be able to give our law director more legal, to be able to take legal action and everything. So we definitely do need to bring it through here.
Mayor Connie?
Oh, yes, Chief, yes.
Most of the admissions she's given, this is mostly a tenant issue with the landlord, all right? The landlord is the one that asked to make some of those fixes that she wants. And we are currently working with him right now with some of those issues, some of the people that she's mentioned. As far as criminal acts, our hands are tied because we, it's a he said, she said thing. And we have no proof of actual physical threats, right?
No, because everything, everything we got on camera, you guys have told us that it's not.
It has to be some kind of a physical threat, this can be.
No, you said it wasn't, you said it wasn't good enough, it wasn't clear enough. But you could hear him plain as day threatening.
Say what?
He said things, he's threatening, he's threatening Anthony. He's threatening to come over there and beat his ass and say that he was gonna shoot him. He threatened him outside, said that he was gonna get guns, and he was gonna come over to our house and shoot us.
We looked into that, the whole issue. So, again, we're in the process of working with landlord on this issue with those people. Again, it would, it would at least be no more than ever respond to it on North Avenue again, like, or any of my guys. I mean, for twenty-seven years, we've been on that, so I've worked here, we've been on that, so. And again, we've worked back and forth with the landlord year after year on this type of stuff. It's gotten better, then it gets worse, then it gets better again.
Okay.
Well, it gets better when nobody, but Barb and Pete and Jackie have been living in the apartments.
I believe Barb has lived there about twenty-one, twenty-three years.
Twenty-five years or so, something like that.
But they, they act like they run the whole town.
You know, they think they own everything, you know, we can do anything without their permission, or you can't go outside and do anything without them calling the cops. You know, we go outside, or we even have people over, like, family for cookout. They say they're gonna call the cops and say we're having parties and all kinds of stuff. It's like, you don't even know what's going on over here, why are you even, you know, you shouldn't have any say in who I have on my property and my house. So it's just, it's getting to be out of control. I can't, I can't deal with it anymore.
We, thank you for coming and talking with us, and we will work with our administration and chief to figure out some next steps, what we can do.
All right, well, I have this petition, and I'm getting more people to sign it. And if I have to, I've got where I need to go with it, so I'm just, I would love for you guys to help me out. You know, in my past, I've not been the best person in this town, but.
Passes don't matter, so.
Is the petition here in the apartments, or?
I put it here to either, can you get rid of the tenants or get rid of the apartments? So, and everybody understands that, that's signed this, they've read it. I'm just, I can't, I just can't do it anymore.
I'm gonna put Mr. Hutchison on the spot back here. Stroke lights for outdoor lights and everything, is that something that we could? And tell me if you need more time to research along with legal, I understand.
Yeah, I don't have to do some research. I know we cover strobe lights and flashing lights in our signage section. Off to do a little more of this game. I mean, light should be, shouldn't go off of a property, so there may be an avenue, because I don't know why.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into our reports, I've helped, last Friday, we, in conjunction with Johnson Alder Local School District and American Legion two forty-eight, we held a community Veterans Day ceremony, and it was well-attended and along with students from the Johnson Alder Elementarys, and very well. So I appreciate everybody's help getting this organized. And I do want to thank Ms. Linda Granger, Mr. Denton-Kitts for helping to get the ceremony programs put together and coordinating with myself and the Johnson Alder Band and Choir, of trying to make sure that everything went off without a hitch, and so appreciate their help of getting it advertised as well, too. This evening, I attended the AWS Amazon Web Service Think Big Space Grand Opening at Canaan Middle School. There are only forty Think Big Spaces in the, in the U.S. Twenty of them are in Ohio, and two of them are in Johnson Alder Local School District. So I know we always talk about, you know, support small business and is Amazon a small business, but tonight, it definitely clicked that they are investing in our community, they're giving back, and what they're doing for our middle school and then our K through twelve students is fantastic. So it was very appreciative to see the students engaging and hands-on learning. And that is, coloring contest is due, so all of your neighbors and community members make sure that they get their coloring contest entries in by this coming Thursday, this Thursday, the sixteenth, so we can pick our tree lighting pixies for December second, because it's already, next week is Thanksgiving, so. Where has this month and year gone? That is all I have for my report. Ms. Sonnet, our finance director?
Here, I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Chief McKee?
Officer Seagres provided professional development training for all of Johnson Alder School District. Passion on voting big, they were there for the training. He also presented workplace violence and active threat training for the Union County Safety Council for their request. They actually called and requested him to come into their training, so he did that. And then I would like to thank the Plain City Lions Club for their donation to the political parliament. And lastly, congratulations, Mr. Stent, for being re-elected. I see Mr. Aaron's here, correct me if I'm wrong, also, I think Darren Lewis. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Village Administrator, Ms. Lutton?
Thanks, Mayor. We're hoping with the good weather that the parking lot of town continues construction this week. The contractor was on-site last week. We're working on our grant application for capital appropriations due to the state on Friday, and we're meeting with our local elected representative and senator to inform them of those grants. We will be submitting our comments to the EPA this week regarding the proposed outstanding national resource water amendment to the Water Quality Standards Rule. And lastly, we will be sending out a letter to all utility account holders this week, a physical letter in the mail detailing proposed trash schedule, and also introducing them to the frequently asked questions about the Mid-Ohio Water sort of trend.
Thank you, Ms. Lutton. Mr. Stent, council president?
Yeah, no specific council president updates, except I did the council, coffee with council and friends. You know, that was on hold during the election, but prior to that, I attached it, or we attached it to the farmer's market. We had a farmer's market closeout meeting this past week, and it was a good session. Talked about some lessons learned and planned for next year, and I think it's very positive, lots of momentum getting ready for the next season. And then I had an opportunity to attend Plain City Walks, which is a new group that is just forming, that's kind of, that's interested in ensuring walkability and connectivity and safety. And it's just outgrowth of residents, and though I did not officially attend it as council president, it's worth mentioning, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stent. Law director?
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and marketing?
Our November meeting was canceled, and Mr. Stanford sent a print-ready PC business and attraction map for us to review, getting it ready for the December second first events.
Wonderful. BCA?
We have a meeting planned for November twenty-first at six-thirty in here.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker. Planning and zoning, we have a meeting this Wednesday, the fifteenth, coming up here at six-thirty. And you will see later on, we have Fisher Homes here for a conceptual meeting, and we did planning and zoning, gave feedback, and Mr. Hutchison did say that you're gonna keep the conceptual, like, the same as what they presented to planning and zoning, but we did give feedback. So it'll be interesting to hear council's feedback and see if it matches up with the planning commission. So that is later on here in the meeting. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. Parks and Rec Committee meeting is tomorrow night at six-thirty here. Everyone's welcome, if you wanna come and find out about parks and have fun. It's the most fun committee in the village. So what we have coming up for recreation, I'll just mention, everybody knows about Christmas under the clock, it's December second. And that's gonna be, it turns out to be a pretty busy day, because there's a couple of other things going on that day also. And I'm gonna ask for some help here with Marion Main.
Yeah.
Mayor, are you familiar with that, you wanna?
Yes, I, that's right, and Ms. Ferguson with Main Street Treasures was one of the stops, but Marion Main was very well-attended and a lot of momentum going into that first weekend in November. I forgot that it, it's already passed and everything. But it was greatly attended, and I think a lot of people enjoy being able to go into the shops, do some early Christmas shopping, shop local, and they had a chance to go into Hammer and Stain, which had a class going on, too, which is one of our newer businesses uptown, so it was, thank you, Ms. Reed. I think it was, it's a great event. I know it's a lot for our business owners to have one more night to do, but the community looks forward to it. And is that all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And on tree commission, I do want to mention that Mr. Kitts worked really hard, and along with our ODNR representative, he submitted the application to become a Tree City USA. And so he has put a lot of time and effort into getting that application in. So I think we hear in December, I'm looking at Ms. Granger, it's when they're technically due, but ours is turned in and ready to go. So that is the next steps with the tree commission. Personal and finance?
Nothing to report.
Fire board?
We met Thursday the second, pretty short meeting, the chief was not available due to home board, had a few personnel changes, part-timers moving, honorary, things like that, so that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker. Design review board?
I believe we have some applications this month coming up, so we have, do we have some applications coming in? I thought we did, didn't we? Just, yeah, we did, okay, thank you, Mr. Rucker. I thought we did, I hadn't seen, I was just checking my email, I couldn't find them, so.
That's on the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. One day up there, yes. Economic Development Committee, Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. We met on October the twenty-fourth, and Karen Elan, who is the director of the Union County Tourism, was there to speak to the committee. She talked about the importance of tourism and how much business that brings to their county and the surrounding area. Also, she did speak to the committee about the wayfinding program that, you know, the village has partnered with Union County for the signage and such. So she updated the committee on what the signs were gonna look like and the importance of that. So we appreciated her time. Our next meeting is gonna be November the twenty-eighth at eleven a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. And rules committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Rules committee continues to work on development of council rules. We're meeting after this meeting tonight. Hopefully, we're not gonna be too late. And as our meetings generally take about an hour, you're welcome to hang around and witness sausage being made, and it's a lot of fun. So that's our meeting tonight, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Moving out reports into discussion items, our concept plan presentation from Fisher Homes. So if you'd like to take a quick word.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Webb. I am planning and tenements manager with Grant Communities. Grant Communities is actually the developer for Fisher Homes. So I wanna take a couple of seconds just to thank you guys for taking some time to hear us tonight. We just wanna present our vision for the Noah Beaching property and also receive some open feedback on your thoughts and your opinion on that. So a little bit about Fisher Homes. We were founded in nineteen eighty, we've been around for forty years. It's a family-owned business, we're located in, just outside Cincinnati, in Orangeburg, Kentucky. It's a privately owned, family-oriented company. We operate in several different markets. We're recently working out of Florida market, Atlanta, Louisville, St. Louis, Columbus. We came into the Columbus market in two thousand eight, Cincinnati, Northern Kentucky, and Indianapolis. So we are a national builder, we're in the top thirty, I believe, right now in the country. Some local communities, like you just previously saw, the image of Jerome Village, also down in Grand City at Armstead, a couple of different places in Hilliard, and recently we're building a project called Skybrook out in Marysville. So that'll be a new one coming up. So a little bit about the site. The site is outlined in red on the screen. It's just over eighty-nine acres, it's a Noah Beaching property. It has access off of one sixty-one and Cemetery Road. It is not currently in the village, so we would be coming back. Our next steps would be to come back with a pre-annexation agreement and discuss an annexation. There's very little ground franchise, so that would have to be done in a two-part annexation process. And we've had conversations with Mr. Hutchison and also with Ms. Lutton as well to kind of establish a pathway with that. The vision for the site, right now we're proposing our main access coming off of one sixty-one, and then making a connection with a little bit of a roundabout as a community feature essentially, down to Cemetery Road. We're proposing on the site plan, I think, two hundred and twenty-seven home sites. A mixture of the lot sizes, a minimum lot size we would have would be a fifty-five foot, all the way up through eighty-foot home sites. So that's really three different product lines that we're proposing from Fisher Homes. Our open space is about twenty-five percent right now. We have reviewed the PUD code, it's been recently drafted and whatnot. This plan completely meets your PUD code. There are a couple of exceptions on here, I'd love to talk about those really quickly. The north, when we come down in, you see kind of like a loop street. That would be, initially we had a cul-de-sac there. We felt like we could make that street shape a little more interesting by doing the island in that street, and that does exceed the requirement of six hundred feet length. So that would be something that we'd be looking for variance to. And then one other thing that came up during planning commission, where we'll be required to add little landscape buffers, specifically on the eastern property lines, I'd like to get some feedback on that, maybe at the end of this discussion. We are including, it's kind of hard to see on this plan, I apologize, but we're proposing a tot lot. A tot lot kind of near that cul-de-sac, or that roundabout area. We've opened up the space so that the homes, we have a good amount of homes backing the open space on here. We would propose some pathways that go through that open space, up through the gas line easement and around the pond. And we also understand that there is a potential for the trail connection. So we've shown the trail stepping in over to the west, hopefully to meet up and make that connection. We are proposing a landscape buffer on this plan along Cemetery Road. And of course, our store water pond would have a fountain and would probably have some seating areas around it, some viewing areas, and really, I think, that's all we're proposing right now for amenities as far as the trails, the tot lot, possibly picnic shelter and walking trails around the pond. So I just wanna talk a little bit about the product, and then maybe we can swing back to this at the end and talk about feedback. Some of the product that we're proposing on the fifty-foot sites, this would be our Maple Street collection. I have some images just for your viewing. This is an interior image, and our floor plans are interchangeable, so when you come in, you can customize it if you're interested in purchasing, so you can get different upgrades and whatnot, and that's in all of our product lines. This is our design collection, this would be on the sixty-five-foot sites. This ranges anywhere from a, since two by the limits, three to six bedroom. These are typical Muga buyers, families, some images for elevations. three to six bedroom, these are typical move-up buyers, families, some images, our elevations, we'd be proposing here. And then, of course, our eighty-foot sites are our masterpiece collection, these start at twenty-eight hundred square feet and go up, also three and six bedrooms, these are also repeat buy-up home buyers moving up to the bigger homes. Some images of that product. And then, talking a little bit about open space, we are proposing playground within the development, the open space, the green space with pathways, and just real areas just to kind of connect and make it walkable throughout our community. So I don't know if you guys have any questions or feedback, but I'd just like to open it up now, just an open discussion.
I, okay. What is a tot lot?
A tot, it's a flicker.
Thank you.
So how many, how many of each side are you guys proposing, the fifty-five to sixty-five and eighty?
Right now, let me go back to the plan, we have a.
I don't know if it was up there or not.
It was, but it's probably hard to see. So right now, the way that this plan is showing, it's ninety-one home sites would be the fifty-five, so about forty, forty-three percent, and then just under that thirty-six percent would be the middle, sixty-five minimums, and about twenty percent of the eighty-foot sites.
And about how much space?
And the fifty-five foot, that's a minimum, so you know, the code requires variation with that, that's just a very minimum.
I mean, what, so what's the, what's the, the minimum space that we're going to have between buildings on those fifty-four?
So I believe, and I'll confirm with, with staff, we proposed it as our current regulations are, so it'd be seven and a half foot, seven and a half foot side yard separation.
Yeah, so the minimum would be.
Minimum would be about.
Better than ten. Also, one other thing, do you guys plan on addressing the cement plant to the west of that development? I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I'm not going to, I don't want to spend five hundred thousand dollars for a house next door to a.
Yes, I understand, so we did receive the plans that they're proposing, I know that they have some landscaping proposed on their plan, the village can't obviously enforce that, but this site, with the cemetery being so far down the road, as we get closer, we'll have to address that, seeing what, what's going to be there, I think, right now.
Are they white or tan lots, are those the eighty-foot ones in the picture?
Yes, I should have probably broke that out, the tan ones are closer to one sixty-one, those are the wider eighty-foot sites, and then the blue, kind of in the middle of the site, those are the sixty-five foot minimums, and then the purple, the closer to cemetery where it would be a more narrow with the minimum fifty-five foot.
Your, your open green space that you mentioned, you're going to have like playground equipment or something, and then how big is that?
Oh, that's a great question. It's about forty by thirty-five feet square.
Oh, it's not real big.
That's just the playground itself, if we.
Oh, the playground part, I was talking about the home area.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, the other side is about twenty-two point, twenty-two point three-six acres per that.
Twenty-two acres, okay, that's a good size for sale, for sure. Okay, yeah, and so you're thinking of that as like a, a, a development park, let's.
Yes, so that would be maintain the area in the middle, I think we would probably look to maintain that, so it'd be landscaped, we have a walking pathway through there, it was a gas line easement, I'm familiar with that from the development to the new office, so we would do some, whatever we can and have to improve that, so hopefully we could do a trail or something through that.
Yeah, imagination is really important here, creativity with these areas, because we have our Madison Meadows development over on the west side, and fortunately, we got double that number of acres over there approximately, I think, and we're putting ball fields of, and soccer fields, we built a restroom area in it, in a kind of like a mini pavilion, so as much creativity as you can bring to that, you know, we would fit in, I think, with the general idea of what the village is looking for, for, for a park area. You know, you don't have to go, you know, crazy with it, but you know, good is good.
Can I ask a question about that, with, with that project, does the village own and maintain that?
Oh, the, the village was given that land by the developer.
Okay.
In exchange for something else, I forget what it was.
Understood, okay.
Yeah, so, so yeah, that's our, our part that we're developing over there.
Okay.
With the, with the developer's help, they're building the building with the restrooms in it and stuff like that, so yeah, it's big cooperation there, it works really well. So if you think of something, you know, don't hesitate to bring it up, that, that,
Absolutely.
You know, we could help out with.
And we are very early on in this process, so that's kind of why we're here tonight, just to, to get your feedback, so it's very helpful to hear.
One other thing I'd just kind of like to throw out there, have on the radar, is the traffic increase this is going to have on Cemetery Pike, that, that intersection, Cemetery and one sixty-one can be a mess, or as it is right now, so I don't know if there's some way to look at maybe improvements at that, at that intersection as part of this project, just because of the increased traffic that we're going to see there.
There'll be traffic surge required for most of the.
All right, yeah, I just, just wanted to make sure that was on the radar, because it's not contiguous to this project, but it is definitely going to be affected by this process.
And I know those are definitely on the county engineers' radar too right now.
Be good, that would actually be a good spot for a roundabout. Well, that angle, that angle is just so wonky.
I actually attended the planning and zoning meeting where they discussed this, and I thought the zoning commission had a couple really good comments, maybe I can add to it. One, that you're kind of making a strip there that people are going to cut through, so breaking up that, I thought was a good idea, because maybe if you could have somehow the entrance and exit not just be one long strip, because people are going to probably try and cut through that neighborhood over.
Are you suggesting maybe?
I think offset, offset that.
Yeah, like, otherwise, I mean, I know teenagers and myself, I mean, we're going to cut through that, right, like, that's what's going to happen. I thought that was a really good idea that the planning commission brought up, and then, it's, it's your product, but it is interesting to have the largest lots with the closest to the main road, if that's how you guys think the layout works the best, but I thought that that was another point that the, they brought up of, does it make sense to flip that a little bit, so just adding some stuff from what the planning commission brought up, I thought were good comments, so.
And they're also backing up to the.
It's your product, but maybe swap those, you know.
I was hoping for you guys to bring that up before I, but I'm glad you were at that meeting. Any other questions, observations?
I mean, we're clearly long time, like, this is.
It's, yeah, it's a little ways over, and the reason we're, well, one of the reasons is we all have to go through the annexation process and like, because we have to do the double annexation, so. And I have one question with the landscape buffers on the site, is there, does the buffer have to be off the lot, or I'm not sure if that's.
I look at our planner.
Is it going to be on the lot?
Yeah, so I think what we, yeah, I think what we discussed about potentially just that, yeah, the rear yards, I mean, it doesn't have to be a separate incident, or they, they just be along.
Thank you.
And I do want to add that the trail that she was mentioning on the western side would be the Heritage Trail, so this could be a very good possibility for that Heritage Trail extension, so just keep that in mind of this.
Any other comments, Ms. Ferguson, anything? Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for taking time to listen to us, and our next steps will be the pre-annexation meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next discussion item, community grant program application of the Plain City Historical Society, so let Ms. Lepton.
Yeah, as discussed at last week's meeting, the Historical Society has submitted a community grant application, it was a complete application, they're requesting eight thousand dollars to help assist the furnace air quality equipment replacement, they are a 501(c)(3), they do benefit the community, both visitors and tourists, for your consideration. We do have money available.
Motion to approve the grant?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Dreyer, would you take the vote?
Absolutely.
Mr. Rucker? Yes. Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the twenty twenty-three supplemental budget update.
Well, tonight's agenda is a supplemental budget for twenty twenty-three, we have to account for the storm sewer note proceeds that were approved a few weeks ago, and also we analyze for where the ARPA money is going for, in the meantime, we just did a couple other cleanup items to hopefully get it through the end of the year, we're requesting a waiver of the second reading so we can get that money out to the applicants.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton, and amending the garbage collection rates and billing?
Yeah, since it's up for reading, I just wanted to highlight that this also mirrors a discussion item we had last week, we are proposing that we amend the trash billing cycle to quarterly, we did confirm that we can send out the first one in March, and let residents know in the meantime, we're updating the rates while we're amending the ordinance to the current rate of being built.
And ODNR Land and Water Conservation Fund Program application.
Yeah, lastly, because there is one for us first reading, but we're requesting a waiver of the second reading, there is a Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Program grant that is available, wasn't quite on our radar, but we saw it the other day, the application deadline is coming up, we do believe we have a good application for the dock park, because we have everything ready for it, but we do have to have a resolution of support from council, so we are requesting a waiver of the second reading if council doesn't.
All right. Moving into unfinished business, second reading resolution thirty dash twenty twenty-three, authorizing the village administrator to award the contract for the Plain City Uptown Streetscape Project Phase Three to J. and J. Schlegel Incorporated.
Motion to approve second reading resolution thirty dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Moving into new business, first reading ordinance thirty-three dash twenty twenty-three, approving a twenty twenty-three supplemental budget update and requesting a waiver of a second reading.
Motion to waive second reading ordinance thirty-three twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Motion to approve first reading ordinance thirty-three twenty twenty-three.
Second, or approved?
We waived the second reading.
Oh, true, sorry, you were, you just said first reading, my apology, second.
It's okay.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
First reading ordinance thirty-four dash twenty twenty-three, amending the COPI ordinance as chapter ninety, nine fifty-one dot zero seven and chapter nine fifty-one dot zero eight, garbage collection rates and billing of the Village of Plain City. First reading resolution thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three, authorizing the village administrator to apply to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Program and requesting a waiver of a second reading.
Motion to waive second reading resolution thirty-one twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed, you got it?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
And that concludes our public portion of the meeting this evening, we have two executive sessions on our agenda. Ms. Lepton, we are not coming back with?
No, and I don't see Lieutenant General on, I don't know if you want to read the proclamation.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, okay. The proclamation, whereas Lieutenant General Charles E. Center Jr. began his service with the United States Air Force in nineteen seventy-three as a second lieutenant upon his completion of officer training school and subsequent receipt of his commission, and whereas throughout his military service, Lieutenant General Center has continuously received promotions and has risen to the rank of Lieutenant General while serving in various operational and staff assignments, including duty as an F-4 pilot, F-16 pilot, and A-10 instructor pilot and operations officer, and whereas Lieutenant General Center has received several notable recommendations throughout his service in the Air Force, including an accumulation of over three thousand five hundred hours of flight time in various aircraft, and whereas Lieutenant General Center is now an active volunteer in several organizations, including local churches, the American Legion, hospice, Lions Club, and other community organizations, and whereas the Village of Plain City is a better community due to the service and volunteerism that Lieutenant General Center has displayed, and whereas the Village of Plain City wishes to express its gratitude and appreciation for the dedicated service of Lieutenant Charles, General Charles E. Center Jr. to this country, his exemplary nature of volunteerism and acts of support for the village and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jody Carney, Mayor of Plain City, do hereby proclaim that today, the thirteenth day of November two thousand twenty-three, is a day of celebration of Lieutenant General Charles E. Center Jr. within the Village of Plain City. So, thank you, Ms. Lepton, for having me read this, and if you see Mr. St., Lieutenant General Center out and about in Plain City, please thank him for his volunteerism and his service, so. With our executive session, I'm going to ask that Mr. Harriman is invited into the session, and then in staff members as well, and so we are about to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section one twenty-one dot two-two G two to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, and then the second executive session will be pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section one twenty-one dot two-two G eight to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions. Is there a motion to go into the first executive session? Yes.
Councilmember Reed would need to be present to vote on the executive session.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Reed, we have to have you present to vote real quick, and then.
You haven't done with council yet.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dreyer.
Motion in our executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section one twenty-one dot twenty-two G two.
Second.
Mr. Senz?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending.